Welcome, everybody, this evening.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll begin with the public comment period and Ryan McDonald. Would you like to come forth?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Ryan. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. All right, so first, I want to thank Nick and Jeff and the street crew for helping out with the drainage issues behind the alley behind my building down on Main Street that I think we got it to where hopefully at least on short travel. Saw some water issues back here, so I guess we'll find out maybe next week when it probably is out. To start with, I'm going to put my Rotary Club hat on. I'm kind of new to Rotary, so I don't know the whole backstory, but apparently the city awarded the Rotary group some sales tax grant funds roughly a year ago, and that was for the wagon project. That timeframe, I guess, is about to expire, and I'm here to request an extension to use those funds. The original wagon project involved a wagon that Rotary purchased that they were going to fix up and put underneath a structure. There were some issues in finding a place to park it, and consequently Rotary ended up selling that wagon, and we've kind of decided on a new quote-unquote wagon project. The wagon that we have down there by the river is in need of some repairs this winter. We're hoping to get that down to get some wheels repaired and get that thing fixed up, put a new park over it. And in the process, we're proposing to create a little park area. We've got permission from the landowner, Mike Holmes, to expand onto his property. What I've handed out to you shows kind of the current situation on the left, and what we're proposing on the right, we would basically clean up that area, pull out the existing rock wall that's there, put in a limestone block wall, similar to all the retaining wall stones that you used along the River Walk and all that, so we'd match that. It'd be one course tall. We would tear out any concrete that's on the private property, repour all that, install. And this is not a completely finalized plan. This is the current design we're working off of. Install a couple of park benches. We're looking at creating a Kansas stamped concrete, colored concrete design, and then somehow trying to get the trail noted along that route. The sign that we're looking to put up then would be essentially some sort of a big plexiglass-type sign that would be see-through, and it would have basically a picture of a wagon train or wagons coming down the opposite bank. So as you look, as you stood there and looked through there, there'd be some verbiage and stuff, and you'd be able to read and kind of envision wagon train coming down the opposite bank or across the river. That's kind of our vision for kind of cleaning that area up and expanding it, kind of making it a little bit more picture-friendly and tourist-friendly. So basically, I'm just asking for an extension time to use the funds that you've already designated for us.
How long do you think it will take you to get it done once you start up?
We're planning to get it this spring. It will. Realistically, I'm guessing the time we start tearing stuff out, the time we're done, it's going to probably be at least four or five weeks, just all if you're good nights and weekends and stuff. But it shouldn't take too terribly long.
Is there a normal extension time period that's normally granted?
No, it's kind of case-by-case. If you remember, commission, I think we gave them additional eight months. So it's kind of project-to-project. I think it's better to give them more time than they need. That way they can come back and request again. So I think if you go until the end of the third quarter, which is October, then that'd be just plenty of time to...
I can get two guys around you, you think?
Yeah. I don't know why not. We've got all the funds put together, just a matter of finalizing the design and getting it done.
On this rendition of, it says plant more. I'm not sure what that is.
Oh, that must have got cut off a little bit. Plant more trees.
Okay, more trees.
So what we're looking at, whether we plant trees or not, we're trying to screen the super-attractive satellite issues. And luckily, one of the Rotary members owns that or is in charge of that, so whether we plant some trees or do a privacy fence or somehow, we'll work with TCT, try to get that looking better.
I thought it probably meant plant more or something, but I wasn't...
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other thing in my question would be, this isn't going to change the curbing, the drive-up area at all, right? I mean, as far as the city street?
Correct. We're not looking to... I don't know that we'll be doing anything on city property. The only thing potentially, and we haven't really laid this out for a final version, but where the wagon sits now is actually, I guess it'd be KDOT.
Right, right. City property, but KDOT has a right of way on.
Right. So, I mean, we might tweak that just a little bit, but the current property line is... I didn't, I meant to notate it on here, but I didn't. If you look at the sidewalk, there's the vertical lines where the joints in the concrete are. Two lines in from the curb is where the actual property line is, and that's kind of where we're looking to tie in, tear out everything to the north of that, and replace it with the new design. So unless we get into the city property a little bit there where that existing bench is and that rock wall, that'd be the only area that...
Okay. I'm just wondering about the approach or whatever you call it, where you drive in, where the, you know, the parking for the insurance was. I didn't know if that would change at all.
Nope, nope, not looking to change anything with the curbing, any of that, nope.
So, yeah, does anybody have thoughts, concerns? I think it looks very nice.
I do, too. I think it's got a nice, nice project.
Do I hear a motion to extend the sales tax grant?
Motion to extend it to the end of October. Is that correct?
Yep.
Motion, man.
Okay, to October 2022. It's been moved in seconded to extend the sales tax grant for Rotary for the wagon park from this spring to October 22. All those in favor?
Who sang that, Sharon?
I did, yes.
Motion carries, six zero. Thank you.
Good job.
Looks nice.
All right, so now I'm going to take off my Rotary hat, put on my building owner hat. Down here, the second two pages, obviously, probably most of you see, we put in a red door, one there used to be one back in the day. However, long ago, I don't know when, there is an existing curb cut there, and there used to be, it looks like, four parking spots that are currently there, that used to be no parking. I'm requesting two of those spots go back to no parking, that are basically directly in front of our red door. The first page shows the two spots kind of in aerial view. Second page is the front elevation that shows the two spots that are found directly in front of that curb cut. I don't anticipate using that over that door a lot, but I'd like to try to build that access to that existing curb cut. I want to study this.
Makes sense. Is that something we have to go through the state or the highway, Nick? Is that some...
Not on parking. City unit does deal with the parking.
My question, will the city have to post it as a no parking area?
I think they want to paint white lines, want to paint it. Obviously, Ryan, you can't post no parking signs because it'll block the entrance. Yeah, paint the curb there in front and then...
Yeah, same. Some way to identify.
Yeah, identify as no parking area. But I talked to Jeff about it already.
Would this be then used, Ryan, daily? I mean, how often will that need to be?
Sporadically. I mean, it's going to be loading and unloading once we get the antique store open. I want to be able to back up there or pull in if we need to, bad weather, but be able to load in, load out. The weekends, you know, we anticipate having events where we might actually have a food truck parked there. Just, we've got so many ideas for events and so many different uses. A lot of our events, we may have vendors be able to pull in to unload stuff for trade shows or things like that that are inside, where they can pull in, pull out, get things unloaded. So we could go two or three weeks without using it, and we use it five or six times, you know, a day. So I really can't mention that very well, I guess, at this point.
Currently, there's not anybody that parks down there, to be honest with you.
It seems like the...
Will the city be required to have some law enforcement assistance or notification to the public or anything when you're going to be pulling in and backing out? I didn't know how close to the center line your trucks may get in order to get squared up with them.
We don't currently have that issue with UPS or FedEx that do that stuff, so I don't know...
The only thing I was thinking about, I've seen services unlimited get in with our tractor trailers, and when they have to get lined up with the doors over there, they have to take out the entire street.
Yeah, they don't play law enforcement. I can tell you that.
That was my question, whether it'd be necessary or not.
I don't know that it's necessary for what we're doing.
Okay, that's what I wanted to say.
Going in big semi-trailers.
Maybe quite as big. Doesn't sound like, maybe it's quite as big like a semi.
Yeah, I can't imagine we'd have semis in there, but yeah.
But if he needed, if he did need assistance, I mean, it's available. So he can call and say, hey, I need some help with this.
Yep, that's, that's what I wanted to, if it become necessary.
Yeah.
Yeah, take away and do that. Yep.
There shouldn't be any effect of this on either side of you, your neighbors?
No, yeah, Jeremiah, it's just him. He normally actually parks a couple of stalls over anyway, in front of his building. So mostly, it just affects the parking at our building. Other than if there's maybe one person that parks at the apartments on Main Street, two down, the parking on the other side of the street is always completely open.
In front of the power center.
Are you going to paint it, or we?
I think you have to, if you have to.
We have to let you paint it if you want to paint it. We can give you paint. We have paint. That way you can repaint how you want to paint it, so.
Well, that's what I had.
This is the same street that the Republican, the same block the Republicans in.
The base way up the street from the Republican.
I noticed that there are some problems occasionally down there with the, a lot of people are parking in front of the Republican, and there's people that have been trying to go into the doctor's office with walkers.
Yeah, and I have it on my list of things to talk about and give them the...
Yeah, walkers and things there, so. But I think this is far enough down that it shouldn't...
It won't bother them, it shouldn't miss past the Stella. I mean, it's way past Stella to H&R Block.
We've got us, then H&R Block, and Stella, then Rick, and then Title Company, and then the tire factory, and then the Republican.
Okay. Does anybody have any concerns? If not, does somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion that we accept the two parking spaces for the dealership building as a non-parking area.
Okay. Good move in seconded to allow no parking area for the two sections in front of the dealership building. All those in favor? Oppose? Hey, motion carries.
All right. Thank you.
And thank you for the good graphics. That'll make it easier, the pictures. Thank you. Okay. Moving down to the consent agenda, which includes the amendments from a previous meeting, the appropriations, and we have no, like, cabin transfers tonight. Do I hear a motion?
No.
Okay. I'll put number one for Mark Burner and number two for Keith. How's that? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Being of no old business, we'll move right into new business, the Council Grove, Morris County Chamber of Commerce. Zoe?
Okay, so can you guys see that all right? So I'm here to talk about the presentation that I actually gave our chamber board this week, or last week, and all the new and different ways that Susan, our executive director, and I are reimagining the chamber going forward. Over the past few months, since I started in October, I'm Zoe, by the way, we've been evaluating how we can add more value to our membership and our community, and how we can utilize new approaches to solve old problems. So things that our area has been cycling through for a number of years now. So because of this process, we've come up with a huge plan that enacts a lot of new initiatives, and I'm here to talk to you guys tonight about three different ones that we're doing. Let's see. So I guess we'll just jump in. And part of reimagining what the chamber can do, we are, we've come up with an overall hub for all things economic development and events and travel and tourism. The first step in this is changing our name. So we've decided to steer away from Morris County Council Grove Chamber of Commerce and Tourism, and we've taken on a new name that we feel is actually less limiting than our borders, our county's borders. We've chosen Council Grove Area Trade and Tourism Association. We feel that this new title embraces our history and our history of trade, and at the same time goes forward, embracing all of our economic development strategies and our travel and tourism brand. So this is basically that, and then I'm here tonight to just kind of see if you guys have any questions or concerns about this part so far. Anything yet?
It'd be a lot easier to write.
Yeah, that's true. And it's so much easier to answer. So let's talk about our little hub here. We're hoping that we can create what we're calling Destination Council Grove. It's a welcome center, but it's also a place that embraces all parts of economic development and events in our area. It is also there so that we can support the community organizations that are in line with our same goals and have our same perspectives at heart. So let's type the Council Grove EDC. We want to give that place a shelter, a home to come, have their meetings, keep us apprised and involved, and then we can help make the community connections that make that organization more effective and make our organization more effective, hence adding more value to our membership. And that's just one entity. We're talking about all the different entities that Council Grove has to offer. So we would be looking at the Greater Morris County Development Corporation, the Area Foundation, we'll house our Main Street affiliate office there, the Economic Development Committee, possibly Council Grove Pride, the Arts Council, and any others. We want to offer the opportunity to support them and engage them in our mission going forward so that we can strengthen their mission going forward. So I'm here to ask you guys tonight to support that and encourage any of you, the organizations that you see fit in our area, to reach out to us as we attempt to reach out to them to kind of create this collaborative space. So the next thing we're going to talk about is Council Grove's branding. We're taking a step away from what I've deemed the municipal branding. So Council Grove already has a great logo. It's on the side of all of the trucks in town, and it works for municipal branding. But what we're looking at is something that's more powerful and more dynamic in order to engage people, not only just to travel here, but new residents, retirees, shoppers, day trippers, all the different people that we want to bring in and add new dollars to the economy. So this is a working prototype of what our new Council Grove Travel and Tourism logo is. We're still hammering out details, but for right now, this is kind of what we're going with, and this is just an example. So we're asking that the city partner with us in these endeavors, and maybe when you're making municipal branding decisions, you think about whether travel and tourism branding would be more appropriate in this location. We have also included a new tagline for Council Grove. We're calling it the Main Street of the Flint Hills. So this is our attempt to answer, would I consider a question that was put out there when the municipal branding was conceived? You have your logo, and then it says, "The Flint Hills Life." Unfortunately, though, that doesn't tell us what the Flint Hills Life is. It doesn't tell anybody how great the Flint Hills Life actually is. This branding is designed to do that. So this is what we conceived would look like, a welcome sign into town or a billboard. We're going to match our branding up with people and activities, pictures, things that strengthen the concept of all that there is to offer in Council Grove. We're going to partner with businesses and make sure that we can call out the charms of that. And then we're looking at different places where we can creatively put the travel and tourism branding out. Water Tower is a great example of having this branding out in the world and then welcoming our visitors and residents into town with it as well. So if the city were to say, take on a project like the Water Tower, we would hope that you would come to us and let us participate in the design of it. These are just a couple of other examples of how this branding can translate into uniquely describing all that there is to offer. That's it. Any questions for me about it?
Looks good.
I covered it all.
Yeah, that was a great presentation.
Yeah, a lot of work, a lot of work in there.
And this is a small fraction of what we're taking on at the chamber this year, tiny fraction of it. So we're really excited for everything that we're going to be doing, and we're hoping to come and have better communication and more thorough accountability from the chamber going forward with the city council.
Looks good, yeah.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
The only thing I'll say is I know we are doing more tire projects.
Oh, okay.
And what we've got to quote on is the city logo that we heard from Canada.
Okay.
So I mean, it's up to the council if they want to change that.
The logo that's right here, basically, that's the one we had to quote on.
Yep, this is it. And so you're not really suggesting doing away with this one?
No, not at all. I think municipal branding stays intact, and it's really great for inclusion and camaraderie. And if at some point the city would like to change their branding, of course, we would love to partner and kind of bring it all in line together, but for right now, city branding isn't necessary to change in terms of travel and tourism branding. But I do think that a logo like this and something that really pulls together all the different forces and saturates the eye with these targeted things, I think that's important. So I think a project like the Water Tower should have the travel and tourism branding as opposed to the municipal branding.
I know we've talked in the past, just, you know, the recent past, that our signs need to be, our billboards need to be changed.
Yes.
Are you, are you suggesting that they be changed to look like, like the little guy fishing?
Yes, absolutely. I'm suggesting that we use a targeted approach, and we use different images along this line to show the diversity of offerings that Council Grove has. So every billboard will be different, actually. None of them will be the same. We won't repeat the same image. The welcome signs might be similar, but the billboards themselves, I would suggest that we, and we partner with local businesses. That was one of the reasons I really loved this one right here. I really feel like highlighting our historic lodging, that's a pretty cool thing. And then we can modernize our brand by highlighting the dealership building or Riverbank Brewing, those kinds of things.
Sure.
Right. Well, that, and this is just a question, because those other billboards did not seem to last very long. And I don't know if it was because they were photo, photo pictures or... So my question is, you know, where you have the logo where the wagon wheel was with just the wording.
Yeah.
Would that be longer term? Would that last longer than the photographs?
I would say I don't have the answer for that.
Okay.
But I can find out.
Okay, just, just for curiosity, because those others did not last very long.
I think the other thing that we can do is reflective lighting, too, so that the logo stands out at night. So we're utilizing, our billboards 24 hours a day, not just during the daylight hours, but my technicals, that man over here might know. Do you know if the pictures would last shorter or longer?
It depends on the printing process. Sometimes you can print on metal. If you put a metal substrate up, it'll last a lot longer. So I think it depends on which direction we take it. You can get photos to last longer with UV light or sunlight if it's printed on a different substrate. So we might have to get quotes to figure out, you know...
Longevity.
Longevity.
Well, and when you're talking about reflective, like at night, for example, that, the white would be, what people would see?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just curious, I thought, does anybody else have questions, huh?
I'd like to just real quickly point out that with some of the other billboards, the problem as a marketer that I saw was you would have a picture of a billboard with the Flint Hills, with the municipal branding on it, and then the Flint Hills would be behind it. And there's a bit of a redundancy when you're trying to highlight that you're advertising the Flint Hills while you're already looking at the Flint Hills. So I think this campaign is really designed to show what is available on Main Street and Council Grove, and then what would sprawl off of that, too. So you're not just looking at a repetitive picture, you're actually utilizing the contrast between the Flint Hills and the highways to show what's in Council Grove.
Okay, can I say that real quick? I came to support Burner and say that real quick. I've just been elected the president of the chamber, so I asked Zoe to meet. We wanted to, she presented this to us last week. We thought it was great. We've had some instruction for, she's working on, which is fine, those we can work out. But what we're really wanting from the city is to say, hey, we see you making a stride. We're, you know, it's not something we are going to have a lot of objections to. We want you to move forward with this, because you are one of our most supportive partners in presenting out to the world this town and this area. So we just wanted to make sure you didn't have any big objections before we start investing and doing this full force.
Yeah, it's really important to us that this is a partnership and that it's really, really effective. We understand that at the chamber, we're there to generate business and economic development, which in turn generates the tax dollars that the city is capable to spend. So we want to create even more symbiosis in our relationship.
Does anybody up here have, this is a good time to say it, objections to what's been presented here?
No, not yet.
I like it.
Not to hurt your feelings or anything, just, we might as well find out.
No, no, lay it on me now.
I see no reason to object to it.
Well, there's some great ideas and a lot of, a lot of nice things going on.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your work.
Yeah, and I'll be back more often to keep you guys updated, because there's so many. And so I'm not going to mess with them.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
How old are the signs that are out there now?
Old.
Old.
I would say they're ever 10 to 15 years old.
2015 or 2017.
It was, um, one, two.
That's a pretty good life out of those, really.
2005 or 2007 or 2015?
15 or 17. I can't remember.
They're not that old. They're eight to 10, eight to 12.
I think they're older than that.
The billboards are out there, that are out there right now?
We should do the average, say 10.
We did them, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, about eight, eight years, eight years, eight to 10 years, about.
I would really think that five years would be pretty...
They lasted quite a while.
You know, so.
Very expensive.
The nice thing about the vinyl print like that is it's less expensive, if I'm not mistaken. That way, it doesn't hurt as much to pull the old vinyl off and put new... That way, it doesn't hurt as much to pull the old vinyl off and put new vinyl up and change.
That's what I was going to suggest, you could do them more often that way.
Yeah, I think it would be excellent.
Every two years even, or whatever.
We're very fortunate that we've got some really good contracts on our, on our, they're old on our billboards, so they're, and they're longstanding, so we're very fortunate as far as costs and stuff. They're not inexpensive, but they're good, good, I think so.
So is it appropriate for me to ask, if the billboards come up for renewal, that you guys let me know, and then I can kind of partner together, kind of actually, can we work with a designer that would be in line with the campaign?
Actually, the chamber is the one who takes care of that, and we don't take, the city doesn't take care of it, so that's the chamber that takes care of it. We do help usually with, with financial, so.
Have after it.
What?
Said have after it.
Awesome. I'll be out there changing the billboards tonight. Send drinks.
That's right.
Yeah, the chamber's obviously done it in the past, the economic development, City Economic Development Group, when it was newly formed, helped with the last, you know, coming up the logos and branding and stuff, and then we all worked together to, in conjunction with each other.
Okay, we'll work together in the future then.
Thank you.
Hey.
Okay. Anybody have anything else to add to that before I move on? Okay, the next is Sales Tax Grant Committee recommendation for the Fourth of July committee?
Yes, we met last week, the Sales Tax Grant Committee, the Fourth of July Committee put forth a request for $15,000 in sales tax funds for the Fourth of July event. It was on July 3rd, but we need to change it back to July 4th. So yeah, that was their request, and they recommended approving their request.
Do I have questions, concerns about that?
Do we need a vote to go back from?
Yes, but you voted to change, isn't it?
Yeah, okay, so first, I'll make that motion that we change the date from the 3rd back to the 4th, which would be a.
Monday.
A Monday instead of a Sunday fireworks display.
Okay.
Seconded that.
It's been moved and seconded, move the Fourth of July celebration to July 4th from July 3rd. Anybody, how many comments? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries six zero. Okay, and then they are asking for $15,000 to come out of sales tax grant money, and the Sales Tax Grant Committee has recommended that that be approved. Do I hear a motion concerning that?
So will.
Okay, Jason?
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve spending $15,000 out of the sales tax grant for the Fourth of July committee, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries six zero. Okay, police and fire committee recommendation.
So Sean approached me with the new body cams, what they've been doing with their storage is storing it on external drives and on our computers, it's not secure, when they go share video footage, it's not encrypted, when they send it to the state or whoever. So Sean, I told Sean to put something together for the council, I talked to Bill, this would be funded through the diversion fund, which is what those dollars are meant to be used for, and it'll help Sean and them have the ability to have the information on cloud, it's encrypted, it's secure, only the people that are designated to access it can access it, so.
Okay. And the total cost on that was, I don't have the page up here.
Thirty-three hundred and three hundred and sixty.
It's actually thirty-two oh six every year, over a five-year period.
Do we have to pay it all upfront?
No, it's per year.
Per year.
So that'd be thirty-two oh six per year, which is why we.
How soon can we have this up and go, and then once?
Well, once we get it approved, Sean can call tomorrow, and he'll get it, the way we're going. So, but right now, our thing's on laptops, down to their laptops, and on external drives, so.
It's an important part of our.
Yep.
I answered the question as well.
Make the motion that we approve the request from the police and fire committee recommendation.
Okay, been moved and seconded to approve the police and fire committee recommendation, money to come out of the diversion fund for thirty-two hundred and six dollars per year for the storage of the body cam cameras.
Thirty-two or thirty-three?
Thirty-two. Sean, Sean gave me an updated one, we left today, and they're off by about $500. They took something off that we didn't need.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor? Okay, motion carries six zero. Thank you. Next, we have executive session, Keith?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we go into executive session, attorney-client privilege on City Lake with the entire council, the mayor, city attorney, and city administrator, 45 minutes.
Okay, seconded. It's been moved and seconded to go into executive session for 45 minutes with the mayor, the council, the attorney, and our administrator, all those, oh, we're city, client attorney privilege concerning City Lake, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries six zero. Let's go through governing body, start out with Dickson.
I don't believe I have anything.
Okay, Mark?
No, nothing.
Keith?
I just have one thing, I brought up to Nick a while back, and he said we have, I had a person in our ward ask about a sign for the rec building over at Army, and Nick said we have a sign somewhere.
It's not, it's, it's the sign that was out front here before we put up the digital sign, I checked on that, so we'd have to, Jeff and I have it, we'd have to get it redone in order to use it over there, yes.
And I thought it was a, this is somebody that lives over there in that area and said that, you know, people coming down the hill or coming into town or whatever have no idea what that is, and I hadn't thought about it, but.
Yeah, it is a mark.
It's identified.
That's right. Okay, so you're going to look into that in there?
I have looked into it, you guys, you decided if you want to reskin that sign or get something different.
I think it's a good idea.
Would that be the rec?
Now I can get a price from Red Bud, who does that stuff, to see what it would cost, and come back and let you guys know.
I had a question brought up to me that we could maybe tie those together, but identifying our parking, our new parking area, and it's trailhead over here on the river by the bridge.
Trailhead.
Yeah, the new parking lot, I'm putting by Axe, it's on the Axe property.
You mean identifier, I guess.
Signs and there's parking for event, event parking or anything like that, like he.
There's not event parking though, over at the Axe property, we don't use that for event parking.
The trailhead though, right there, to walk down to it, correct?
Yeah, there's just, there's two spots, there's two spots and two handicap spots that they told there is.
So we could just put a sign there that said "public parking"?
Yeah, I mean.
Ryan brought it up to me, and it made sense.
I guess, it doesn't make sense to me, I'll be honest, because I think that it's attached to the trail, so I guess you, in my, my mind, you would, you know that it's parking to go walk on the trail.
I mean.
We can put a sign up, I guess, if we want to put signs up.
You know what, let's, let's, let's work on this a little bit more, because I think it would not hurt to have, I've seen this in a couple other small towns, public parking Lot A, public parking Lot B, public parking Lot C, so we could do one down at the River Rock, one at the Axe property.
Commission.
The one, Gary's is not, Gary bought that one, so that's not public, but, yeah.
Commission's not public, that's the commission.
Sort of the, where, where that, where that sidewalk enters into that parking lot, so they can't park there for events or anything like that.
The, they, it's not city parking, so we can't say it's public parking for the city, because the call-in's the parking lot.
So we don't have very many of them, there might be only two.
No, and we have public parking already down at the lot down there behind the Hayes House and everything, but it says.
Yeah, it already says "public parking" there.
Yeah, so that one we're really talking about is the one up there, and I think Jeff probably has a public parking sign that we can put up, it's not that big a deal.
Okay.
So, yeah, we agree with that, if that's what we want to do.
Okay. I do not think I have anything tonight, how about you, Marshall?
That's all I had, you brought it up, and I, you know.
Is that what, is that what you guys want to do, is put a sign up there?
Well, I just think that, you know, everyone in Council Grove pretty well knows that it's there, but this, you know, if you're driving in, do you know that you could park down there and walk the entire route of it, come back to it, I just.
Well, I think what we need to do, there's a kiosk, what I would recommend that you do, there's a kiosk of a picture of the Riverwalk that Mark Brooks told me about, and it's not been updated since we done the north extension on the other side, and it just has the south side that we got done. I would recommend updating that, which, because it shows the trail and the Riverwalk, and you know what I'm talking about, Sharon?
No.
Where's that kiosk at?
It's down on the Riverwalk.
Oh, it's on the Riverwalk.
Yeah. Mark was telling me about that, and he's saying, do you know that this hasn't been updated? And I was like, well, no, I didn't even know that that existed.
Know the QR code and something like that.
Yeah, I think that you should spend some money on that, updating that. I don't, I'll look at it and.
You'd update that one and, and get a second one.
I was going to say maybe duplicate it.
Put the second one up at the other end.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, I think that would be better than a public parking spot.
Yeah, sure, just something to let people know what, what it is and where it goes and the route you're taking.
That way, if you duplicate it, it'd be either way, like you said, people could park either spot and know where they're going.
Yeah.
Sure.
Eventually, hopefully, what we do with the Axe property is, once we do the Ample Theater we're going, you can rabble and put millions down there, make out a parking area, and people can jump up on the side.
And I thought that was part of the plan, that's kind of why I brought it up.
It is, yeah, we just haven't made the decision to do that.
Go out there, yeah, yeah.
About, we want to get the pavilion done and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's all I have.
Okay, okay, Larry?
I don't have anything this evening.
Sharon?
Just enjoy shoveling the snow.
Okay, Bill?
Nothing really.
Okay, Nick?
Two things, DHA, DHC Chiropractic, which was Sorrell's, has requested that we make a couple spots in front of their building, handicap. He has, they have elderly people that have to park way down in front of Stella or the dealership building, and then walk all the way down there to get into the business.
Yeah, if you're running back, throw them out and try to walk that far.
Yeah, so they requested that, you know, a spot or two, they would appreciate it if you just designate those handicap spots.
I know you and I had talked about doing that, or, or designating them as like one or two hour, because nobody usually stays in that.
Well, I think, yeah.
I mean, just either one would work, probably.
Problem is that people park there, and then.
There's no enforcement on the.
Yeah, it's hard to enforce the timeline unless you, I think it's illegal to chop people's tires now.
Yeah.
So it's just.
I think the handicap's a good idea.
Sounds good.
So, you know, if we, you guys want to do one or two spots?
I think we should do two.
I think you need two.
I mean, you might check this, the police chief, make sure that he thinks that's.
I don't think he's going to have a chance, he won't have an issue with it. Because the, actually, the handicap, there is a handicap spot, but it's in front of Stella, and there's a ramp there, but that's quite a ways away from where the chiropractic place is, so. And they've been approached by folks that wish there was handicap parking that are elderly that go in there.
I'm sure there's probably people that would maybe like to park there occasionally to get into the Republican too, because I know there are people that still go into the Republican, pay their bill and stuff, that are elderly.
Add get their papers.
Uh-huh, or take an article in or whatever, so that'll work out, yeah.
Okay, all of them know.
Okay, that was number one.
You guys going to vote on that, and make it official, that we can?
I'll make the motion that we designate two handicap spots at the chiropractor's office on Main Street.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to designate two handicap parking spots in front of the chiropractor den on Main Street. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero.
And then, just an update, I'm working with BJ Consultants to get quotes on video cameraing the sewer system, they sent out a deal to about, I don't know, eight different companies, trying to get quotes on that 10,000-plus feet of sewer line that we want there reported, so as soon as he gets that back, I think he gave them until the end of this month, or the first week of next month, I guess it is, is the new month, the, this, end of this week to get the quotes back to him, and then once we have that, we'll come, he'll come back to council and we'll present it and figure out what we want to do.
Okay.
And that's all I got.
Okay. Everybody else okay there? Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So will move.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, thank you.